All right, the regular meeting of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors is hereby called to order. This is Tuesday, January 28th pursuant to ARS 38-431. The public will have physical access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. We will start out with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the time of the meeting. The Board may vote to recess into executive session for the purposes of obtaining legal advice from the Board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03, subsection A3. Members of Cochise County Board of Supervisors will attend either in person or by telephone or Internet teleconferencing. Members of the public also may attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams, computer or mobile app, or via phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714, conference ID 10409720. If you have any trouble accessing this meeting, please call 520-432-9200 for direction. The Board may permit public comment during this discussion on any item on this agenda. To speak on an agenda item or during the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the Board by the start of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated and published later as this meeting goes on. This is meant that some presentation materials displayed at the Board may differ slightly from those attached, the attached version. So we'll start out with a roll call vote. District 1, Crosby's here. District 2.
Gomez is here.
And District 3, Antonori is here. All members are present and in person. We will begin by doing a call to the public and allow the public to speak. First individual up is... Oh, I have it somewhere here? I thought it was on the screen somewhere. Oh, I have the forms. Oh, okay. I thought I had it. I thought you guys were going to put them, put them up on the screen. All right, call to the public. All right, so first name on the list is Ms. Dixie McNeely. You have three minutes, Ms. McNeely. Three wonderful minutes.
All right, well, this is my first opportunity to congratulate Kathleen Gomez and Frank Antonori for being on the Board, and I thank Tom Crosby for his past service. So I'm not here just to speak for myself, but, and I'm not even sure what I'm talking about is on the agenda. It has to do with budget and the jail tax. So I am here because I support Dan LeChance and his efforts to straighten out what happened as far as the election. I'm out there and I talk to people, and during the tax election for the jail, there's a lot of chatter, and nobody liked a 25-year tax. And I don't like a 25-year tax myself. Luckily, I'm 82 and I won't have to pay it that long, but anyway. It's a lot of money, and I understand that it's not being set aside for a new jail. I understand we do need a new jail, but if you're going to tax the people, then put the money aside for it. I don't know how it's being spent, but that was, that's my, what I've been hearing. And I'm also not happy with the way the election was handled. If there's like 10,000 people that were disenfranchised or did not get a ballot, that's totally unacceptable. So I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Allison Morse. Is Allison here or online? Maybe?
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, there we go. Go ahead, Ms. Morse, you have three minutes.
Okay. Good morning, Supervisors, and thank you for this opportunity to speak today. My name is Allison Morse, registered voter from Portal, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and 56 other voters across Cochise County who have all contacted me directly. Recorder David Stevens unexpectedly resigned just 10 days after he was sworn into office to serve another four years. I'd like to clarify that the position of recorder is an elected position, yes, but the responsibilities of that office are administrative and should not be politicized. Our county is still recovering from the aftermath of elections-related turmoil and unprecedented staff turnover during this 2022 midterm election and afterwards. I'm referring to five different election directors over the course of a year, several embarrassing lawsuits, and the costly purchase of worthless ballot paper and equipment. Cochise County taxpayers footed the bill for all of this valued upwards of $1 million. I urge you to select the right candidate who will ensure a smooth and seamless transition to avoid further disruption in costs that ultimately undermine voter confidence. Chief Deputy Recorder Heather Lopez is supremely qualified to step into the role of recorder. Having worked two decades in the Cochise County Recorder's Office, her hands-on experience far exceeds that of Mr. Stevens, and her expertise is indisputable. While Ms. Lopez and Mr. Stevens are both Certified Elections Registration Administrators, Heather also has the distinguished title of Certified Public Manager. These are arduous courses that set a high bar. Arizona's own state election director, also a Republican, holds the very same certifications. Ms. Lopez is familiar with the laws and regulations that pertain to the recorder's position and is well-respected by her staff. She is experienced, ethical, and a skilled public servant. I think most Cochise County's residents who know Heather would agree that she is personable and professional. All of these qualities make her the best choice to replace Mr. Stevens. You owe it to your constituents to make the right decision and appoint this unquestionably qualified candidate. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Very good, right on time. Next, we'll go to Ms. Kara Harris. Ms. Harris, present or online?
I am online.
Okay.
My name is Kara Harris, and I've lived at 2265 North Mustang Heights Road in Whitestone for over 24 years with my husband. We're both trying to make ends meet with his retirement at age 75. I would like to address the illegal passing of the jail tax by Sheriff Daniels and Mr. Karwaczka. This election from the get-go was done outside of legal procedure as there never, there was never a petition passed out to put this on the ballot. Add to this, the two compadres in crime against Cochise County residents placed an advertisement in the Sierra Vista Hemorrhoid, oh, I'm sorry, Herald, the day before the BOS gave them permission via the yes votes from Judd in English. I know this as I was present in the boardroom and witnessed this violation of legal procedures. Interesting, our sheriff and now judge showed no hesitancy to break the laws set up to protect we, the people, from taxation without representation. Things look peachy here in old Cochise County where the law doesn't seem fit, see fit to follow the laws. Hmm, sounds like a case about a DUI and a prosecutor, doesn't it? I'm happy this current Board does not kowtow to the sheriff and his minions in the county attorney's office. I was told by Ms. Judd years ago, and I quote, "Oh, we don't tell Sheriff Daniels what to do, he tells us," unquote. My response to this utter ignorance of this comment was, "Well, then I guess we have no need to pay supervisors to rubber stamp everything these people want us to consent to, do we?" Thank God for a Board willing to rein in feckless, out-of-control officials who have forgotten we, the people. Now, I'm all for a new jail and only wish the monies taken in over the past year was being used to build one. I also wish Sheriff Daniels had never violated the laws and my trust in him. And by the way, you are known by your fruits and not just by an R after your name. The choice to utilize a most more cost-effective attorney is a good one since your county family struggled to keep food on their tables. Please consider settling the lawsuit Mr. LeChance has rightfully brought against Cochise County. The two former Board members, the county attorney's office and the sheriff, need to back it up and consider we, the people, their employers. It would restore our confidence in those people elected to serve the people. Thank you all for serving and have a great day.
Thank you. Next up will be Ms. Patrice Nicholson. Is she present or online? Ms. Nicholson, going once, going twice, and Ms. Nicholson isn't here. Okay, well, next we'll go to... I just got Mr. Wong Kwan, is that correct? I apologize for if I butchered the name. Are you present or online?
I am online.
Oh, sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I understand that the Board is working on hiring a new attorney to represent the Board's position for the impending, for the pending lawsuit that Dan LeChance and his team brought on behalf of the people of Cochise County against the taxation, the 1%, the half a penny taxation levied upon us. First, I congratulate the new Board members. We're glad that you were elected, and it's a three-person majority, a complete unified majority on behalf of the people of Cochise. I know that you will work on behalf of all Cochise residents, and I'm very encouraged, and I wish you the best in your endeavors to work and serve for the people of Cochise County. And I would extend my trust to you as new Board members making a new decision concerning this lawsuit. My hope and expectations are that you would undo the prior Board and the administration of what we believe were unfair elections, out of procedures, and illegal. We hope that you would get qualified counsel who would actually look at the law and interpret it properly and make the right decisions as to how Cochise County should defend or should correct the, what we consider to be illegal elections to date. I know that in this last presidential cycle, the Republicans had prevailed and in, in some ways, I think the rest of America agreed that we needed this change. And despite that, we still hold that the election through mail-in ballots, through lack of voter ID checks in various places throughout the nation, and the potential problems that we highlighted all throughout the 2020 election cycles to date, all of those problems remain. And I want to highlight one thing among numerous things that were problematic in the jail tax election, and that is, and other peoples would bring that, so I won't belabor it. We have exhaustively called it, called it out that voters were disenfranchised. There were over 10,000 voters who did not receive notice or ballots, and none of us received proper notice.
All right, sir, I'm sorry, your, your time has expired. We appreciate your comment. Thank you, sir. All right, next up, we have Ms. Inga McCord. Is Ms. McCord present? Oh, yes, she's present.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I feel like this jail tax is, it reeks of corruption and/or ineptitude. The whole thing seems to have been handled very sneakily, and it seems as though perhaps the people that were in charge of doing this went about eliminating as many voters as they possibly could through different channels. I also don't remember information per, I would say, requirements analysis. I don't believe I ever heard anything about the square footage required for a jail like this, and I don't believe I ever remember the number of inmates that this jail was to serve. I could have missed that information. If there was a staff study done, I was, I'm not aware of it. Also, the life of the jail, is it to be built to last for 60 years or whatever? When I was in software development, we spent 40% of our time with requirements analysis, and I don't know that that was done much at all. And another 20% was the design. I don't believe there is a blueprint for this building. So that's 60% of a project. It's a formula to develop a task to be successful. I just think that the front-end work has not been done, and the sneaky way that they went about conducting this election is more blatant than the 2020 presidential election. So I'm very disgusted with this entire thing. I try to explain it to people, perhaps in Pima County, and it's so preposterous that I laugh when I'm talking about it. So I do believe that Mr. LeChance is right, and I personally would like to see another election conducted with the full representation of Cochise County because we have to get back on the right path of honesty and whatever else.
Thank you, Ms. McCord. All right, next up, we have Mr. Johnny Lee Wilson, Sr. Is Mr. Wilson here? There he is. Morning, sir, you have three minutes.
Good morning, Johnny Lee Wilson, I live in Sierra Vista, Arizona. Thank you, Tom, for that scripture. That was awesome. Thank you. I was really impressed when you had your meeting. One of the ladies said she couldn't hear you, so Mr. Antonori didn't say, didn't make us feel bad, he just spoke up so we could hear. All right, I went through a lot of turmoil in the last couple of years, and I prayed that, I live in District 2, and I prayed that we could get some help, that the Board of Supervisors would follow the Constitution like Mr. Crosby does all the time. And I never got any good answers because the other two, I won't mention names, everybody knows who they are. We would, Tom would make a suggestion that they're not following the Constitution, and they'd vote on it anyway, like they didn't really care. And then one morning I woke up and guess what? God sent me Kathleen Gomez.
Oh, thank you.
And I, and I met Frank one time, he comes to our We the People meeting, so I don't really know you very well, but I was impressed with the meeting, how you did the thing. And I'm, and I am against the jail tax because people used to tell me, they say, "You know, you ain't got no sense at all." But now I know I do because you take half of it. So anyway, I don't feel threatened anymore. When I used to stand up here, I had a couple of eyes looking at me like, "What the heck are you doing here?" And I'm just wishing you good luck overturning this thing. We all know it was done wrong, you know, this is, there's laws to follow. And I would like you to read the Constitution and believe in it because if we don't, we lose our county. Look what just happened in our election, and it's an oversight for President Trump, and look what he's done in the last week, changing things, you know? So anyway, I really appreciate you being here and do the right thing and get rid of this jail thing. I'm not against the jail. If we need a new jail, let's do it, let's do it right and find out. One thing I'd like to ask you to do is on voter registration, send out a notice and tell everybody, if you want to vote, re-register, make sure you're registered because that last election, there was like 50,000 ballots that got sent out, it didn't even come back. That's just a waste of money. We need to find out where every penny is going and take care of it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Ms. Tricia.
Jeradet.
Jeradet, and she's online.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Supervisors, Tricia Jeradet, live in Sierra Vista. I participated, listened in on the work session. I thought it was robust, informative. I really appreciated how it went and what I learned, and that was great. Thanks for letting us listen in on that. I was a bit sorry to hear that there will be such weight given to the partisan nature of the recorder job, and I do hope that you will look at experience also playing a significant part. And along those lines, I do hope that Heather Lopez, who seems to be quite qualified, will submit an application. So I'm hoping those will happen. And I'll close with that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have Mr. Eli Dalton Webb. Mr. Webb here? Mr. Webb, is he online? No, going once, twice? All right, Mr. Webb, sorry, we missed you. Next up, we have Ms. Yvonne Mayer, and she's online. She should be online. Ms. Mayer, you there? You see her on there?
Ms. Mayer, if you can unmute yourself.
She probably had to step up. Going once, going twice? All right, sorry, Ms. Mayer, sorry we missed you. Next up, we have Mr. Randall Limbach, and Limbach, I hope that's correct. Oh, yeah, Randall.
That is correct, thank you.
You have three minutes, sir.
Randall Limbach, Sierra Vista, Arizona. I applaud the Board for revisiting the matter of the jail district tax. Elected Cochise County officials used improper due process and deception to effectively swindle the taxpayers into a 25-year, $450 million illegal tax, much of which is a reserve slash fund for the Sheriff's Department. The need for a new county jail was never in question. It was the illegal and underhanded tactics used by dishonest county officials to financially assault an already overburdened taxpayer that places us here today. In recent days, at least one elected county official has engaged in communications with the Arizona State Attorney General and Secretary of State to effectively disrupt the will of the people on this very issue. Again, allegedly, that same public official is known to have used his authority to intimidate local leaders and publicly quash any dissent on this jail district tax matter. I remind this elected county official that he is legally accountable for his conduct as outlined in Arizona revised statutes, one of which is Title 23, Section 23-619.01, misconduct connected with employment and willful misconduct. I respectfully request this Board to take any constitutional and legal steps necessary to repeal the jail district tax and hold a special election for a short-term jail bond with no strings attached. The citizens of Cochise County are tired of being taken advantage of by corrupt and unethical county officials, and we are equally tired of being taxed into oblivion. This Board has a unique opportunity to reverse a horrible and costly injustice perpetrated against the people of Cochise County. Please do not allow the perverted state and county bureaucracies to sway your conscience to do what you know to be right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, we have Ms. Nancy Olmstead, and she is online. Ms. Olmstead? Ms. Olmstead, going once, unmute yourself, ma'am, if you can hear us. Going twice? Sorry, we missed you, Ms. Olmstead. We'll move on to the next person. Next up is Mr. Radford Hyde, and he is online. Mr. Hyde?
Hi, good morning.
Hey, good morning, sir. You have three minutes.
This is Radford Hyde. Thank you. This is Radford Hyde, I'm from Sierra Vista, and I, along with most of the other speakers, are really excited about the prospect of the Board taking action to repeal the jail district and the tax. I'd like to reiterate what several people have already said, including myself, and I'll give you a little bit of background. When I first heard about the jail district, I was really thinking it was totally unnecessary. Why do we need a new jail? What's all this about? A jail is a jail. Everybody seemed to be talking about needing a new jail, but I wasn't convinced. And then after I had discussions with many people, I realized that, along with other people, that, guess what? I'm even convinced now that a jail is totally necessary. We're, we're, we're running it to ground, right? It's, it's, it's not got the facilities necessary to, to house the people that are going to be incarcerated there in a safe and efficient manner. It's not serving its purpose very well. That said, the way they went about getting this jail district initiated and the tax initiated, I feel is wrong. I find it really curious, really curious, that we've got people in office who believe that the jail, it's called the jail district, but they don't, they seem to want to not focus on just the jail. They sold us a bill of goods about a jail. They spread fear porn around to everybody about if you don't pass this sales tax, then we're coming after the property tax for, for people that own property. And guess who the number one demographic of registered and active voters are is property owners? So you scared the dickens out of everybody, disenfranchised a bunch of people, didn't send them ballots, had a special mail-in ballot only with, with ex-supervisor Judd declaring that, you know, we can't win some of these elections unless it's a mail-in only. And I'm very excited that we might have some turn on this action, and I applaud Dan LeChance and the team, and I really find it curious that these people want the money, but they're not focusing on the jail. They want $350 million, and, but they don't focus just on the jail, like I said. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde.
Chair, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One of the speakers said they were on, put on mute by us, and they're on the phone, I think it was Nancy Olmstead. Can you make sure that we didn't have her muted?
We can put her back in the queue.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So she'll be up next after Ms. Conroy, Mr. Conroy. Henry, Henry Conroy will go next, and then we'll, we'll get Ms. Olmstead on right after, right after him. Mr. Conroy, are you online?
Yes, this is Henry Conroy. I'm in Sierra Vista on Christine Avenue. I wish to speak about the illegal jail tax. to speak about the illegal jail tax. For many reasons, it was a criminal act to start with, but also an immoral act on the part of the county. Now we have three supervisors who wish to make it right with the citizens. The $350 million has corrupted many hearts, and they are fighting against the supervisors. Judge Thorne's heart is tainted by the money because he wants to build a new Superior Court in Bisbee and may have impacted his decision on the, the litigation. The county attorney's heart is tainted because she's married to Judge Thorne. Sheriff Dannel's heart is tainted because a new jail should only cost 30 million. I did some research, and for 135 cell jail, cost was, should have been around 25 mil, but they want 90 mil. So besides that, that would leave a slush fund of $250 million for the sheriff's office. Sheriff Daniel, Dannel's is also going around threatening mayors that they will have to start paying to use the county jail. Before this illegal tax, where did that money come from to run the jail? Besides, the supervisors would have to approve any increased payments by the city. So I'm very saddened by our county's totally disastrous state of affairs. It is deplorable that the county attorney who's married to the judge who presided over our litigation is preventing anyone in her office from representing the supervisors. But in fact, Mr. Carrera is also fighting against the supervisors and not supporting them. I know the sheriff is fighting this case because it means a difference between his 90 million for a jail and the 350 mil as a slush fund. I totally support a new county jail, but I do not support the additional slush fund monies to be raised over the 25 years. I totally support the Board of Supervisors in seeking new legal counsel. I totally support open and transparent discussions, transparent discussions about the new jail. I support the sheriff department's mission. I do not support a 25-year tax. The county's presentation to the jail committee in October 7, 22 indicates a three-year sales tax, not 25. We do not support the surplus 22-year unspecified slush fund tax. We do not support the disenfranchisement of 10,000 or more Cochise County registered voters during the jail tax election, many of whom, by the way, voted in the election before that, and they also voted in the election after that. Instead, we support the decision of the three-judge Tucson appellate court decision on June 25th, 2024, that the 10,000 registered were disenfranchised. We do not support the actions by the sheriff's department contacting Secretary of State Adrian Fontes and Arizona Attorney General Chris Mayes requesting their offices intervene or threatening the mayors to get them to support this illegal tax. I do recommend that the supervisors put all of these items on your agenda for discussion, and we, the people, will be back to support this effort.
All right, sir. I'm sorry, your time is up. Uh, thank you, sir. Next, we'll go to Ms. Olmstead. Ms. Olmstead?
Does she need to call back in?
If she's on Teams, she needs to unmute herself.
Is she on?
If she can press star six, if she's on the phone.
And we'll, we'll, we'll skip her again. We'll see if she can come up. We have, uh, three more, uh, speakers here, so she has time to get, get back online. All right, we're going to go to Mr. Patterson, Joseph Patterson. Uh, are you present, sir? Yes, sir. You have three minutes.
Good morning. I'd like to congratulate the new board members, Ms. Gomez and Mr. Antonori, our new chairman. Thank God for you all, and of course, our old board member, Mr. Crosby. Uh, welcome and thank you, and, uh, really see it as a miracle that you all are here representing us, and, uh, we just thank God for you. Um, a lot of excellent, uh, opinions, points, arguments made here today. Um, and it, one thing I would like to say is, I appreciate the fact that you folks love the Constitution and have promised to faithfully honor, faithfully honor your oath to defend the Constitution against all assaults. I think essential to the Constitution, to that, to that role is to defend election integrity. Election integrity, we can all witness over the last eight years, the cost of having no confidence in our election system, what it has done to us. We have to be able to trust our election process. It's absolutely essential. In this particular case involving the jail tax election, the integrity of the process has been brought into question, and you've heard, we've all heard many arguments today attesting to that fact. We can't have this. We have to have election integrity. I would, in my opinion, the appellate court seconded the opinion that the election that was held did not meet the standards for election integrity. It did not meet them. And regardless of anything else, because of that fact, it cannot be accepted. However, in addition, in addition to that, though, we need to recognize the fact that a jail, we do need a new jail.
No, sorry, sir. That's your time. Appreciate you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. All right. Again, uh, is Ms. Olmstead on now? Is, is she on?
Good, this is Nancy Olmstead. Can you hear me now?
Yes, there we go. We have you now.
Yay, yay, say, I'm so sorry for the inconvenience. Yes, I'm Nancy Olmstead. I live in Westone, District 3. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm speaking today in support of the board's decision to hire new counsel for the jail tax lawsuit. For the record, I fully support a new jail. However, I do not support how the county chose to fund it, the lack of transparent, factual information, failure for professional governance, and the election process. Here's an example. Last year, a 269-page feasibility study was presented for a new Pima County jail. The study included several cost options, 600 and 800 million dollars. Pima's population is just over a million. Using the lesser amount equates to a cost of $597 per resident. In contrast, Cochise County will collect over the next 25 years, a half-cent sales tax projected to generate nearly $270 million and more with inflation. Based on our population, rather than the 40 to 60 dollars we've been sold, the actual cost per resident will be around 2200 dollars, or $8,600 per family of four. That's 260% more for a new jail here in Cochise County than Pima's. Point two. While serving on the jail committee, Chairman Antonori requested a feasibility study. However, he was told by county administrator Kowatzka that a study would be too expensive. Are you kidding me? No wonder we're paying four times more than Pima for our new jail. That's nearly one-third of a billion dollars, billion with a B, without a cost analysis. This is an egregious failure of governance. These facts alone clearly demonstrate the dereliction to thoroughly and transparently present all pertinent facts to the voters prior to asking for approval. Again, I fully support a new jail. However, we must revisit this discussion, and that's the purpose of the lawsuit. As such, our new board deserves to be equipped to effectively represent us, the people. Instead of rushing into this, let's start over. Do it right. Our families and future generations here in Cochise County deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next up, we have Mr. Paul Varble. Sir, you have three minutes.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Paul Varble, Sierra Vista. The actions of the last board were pretty fraudulent, and this board needs to correct their actions. Their fraudulent actions. Do you understand the word? Vitiate? It only takes one act of fraud to vitiate the outcome of any actions taken, including elections and the presidency. Part of the issue, uh, was kind of like the Boston Tea Party. No taxation without representation. Remember that in the beginning, we were not voting for a jail sales tax, and we fought it. What they pushed through on the ballot was a jail district sales tax. We weren't looking to build an empire for anybody. We agreed we needed a new jail. So where is it? Money has been gotten, money has been spent. Where is the jail? Court action has been going on for a while, fighting we, the people, who wanted this done the right legal way. We won't tolerate fraud. So where is the jail? Where is the property that the jail might be put on? Where did the money go? The new Board of Supervisors need to fix this fraud. The county did not win the election. They didn't even run an election. So against the will of the people, they ran an all-mail-in election off-season when they hoped no one was looking, so they could commit fraud. They disenfranchised 47,000 voters and claimed they sent out 76,000 ballots, but they had no chain of custody and no proof that they had gone out or who got them. They claimed only 25,000 ballots were returned and 3,500 other ballots supposedly returned undeliverable. They cannot or will not say where those 47,000 ballots are or what happened to them. They claim they won the election 51, 49, 49%, with only 12,800 yes ballots, or about one-sixth of the county electorate. But they have no verifiable proof of who got the ballots, who voted them, who returned them. It was a completely uncertifiable fraud process. What the average citizen doesn't know is that the county has to be able to prove 100% they conducted a certifiable election, and there was full chain of custody with identities, and they simply can't. Furthermore, the people voted in the November 22nd general election to require a supermajority of 60% to win a tax election. The county, the county did not come anywhere near that requirement, and therefore they did not win the election, and they disenfranchised.
All right, sir. Sorry, your time is up. Thank you. All right. Our next speaker is Mr. Daniel LeChance. All right, sir, you have three minutes.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Daniel LeChance. I'm from Sierra Vista. We appreciate the Board of Supervisors taking action concerning the unlawful creation of the jail district. It's not an easy thing to stand up and acknowledge the county got it wrong. There are three substantive issues of law which necessitate the jail district be dissolved and the tax revoked. A, Arizona's constitutional law requires that at county level and below, the power of the initiative is reserved to the electors for all matters. The Citizens Committee, which the previous board relied on, did not have the authority to make a recommendation for the jail district without also having 15% of the elector's signatures on petition approving the election for the jail, jail district. Without those, the election could not be lawfully conducted. See Arizona Constitution, Article 4, Part 1, Section 1, all subparagras for applicable constitutional law. The Constitution is the supreme law of the land. All of the statutes written must be in conformance with the Constitution. They did not follow the Constitution in this process. B, the Arizona Constitution was amended at the general election in November 2022. The amendment required that all tax elections must achieve a 60% supermajority yes vote in order to impose the tax. The election only achieved a 51% yes vote and therefore did not pass. See Subparagraph 5 of Arizona Constitution, Article 4, Part 1, Section 1. Here's the substantive portion. For an initiative or referendum to approve a tax, it shall become law when approved by 60% of the votes cast thereon, not less than that. The county did not have the authority to change how the electors vote by imposing an all mail, by imposing an all-mail-in election without the prior approval of the electors of the county. Also, at least 10,000 voters were disenfranchised, meaning they were intentionally left out of the election. Many more did not get a chance to vote. Approximately 47,000 one-question ballots were apparently not returned, and we are told a mere one-sixth of the electorate, 12,800 of 86,000 voters, determined the outcome for the other five-sixths, because there was no real option to walk in and vote as there should have been. And they rightfully believe the mail-in election is fraud-filled and therefore not a legitimate election process. We cannot have elections where authorized registered voters are prevented from participating. It's a fact Peggy Judd admitted during a BOs meeting that these jail elections could not be won if they had a walk-in election. So it is clear the jail district must be dissolved.
Okay, got it.
And the tax repealed.
Sorry, sir. That's, that's your time. Thank you.
Oh.
Chairman Antonori, I believe it's Yvonne Mayer.
What did I do? Yvonne Mayer. Oh, oh, Ms. Mayer, is, is that, is that her now? I'm sorry, Ms. Mayer. We, we didn't start the clock for you. So you got three minutes. Go ahead. Ms. Mayer, you can go now. I'm sorry. We just started. You got three minutes. All right. The poor lady. I'm so sorry.
Is, is she on, on mute or no?
She's attending via phone, and she is unmuted.
Ms. Mayer, go ahead, please, if you can hear us. Go ahead, speak. I didn't mean to cut her off. I just wanted to, nobody could hear her first few sentences. I wanted to give her a chance to restart. She not there?
Now she's on via Teams, and she needs to unmute herself.
Are you there, Ms. Mayer?
Okay. Can you hear me now?
All right. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thanks.
You have three minutes.
All right. Okay. I think I've taken that much time trying to get on. Uh, I want to speak about the lawsuit against the county for the way the jail district election was held. I am one of the litigators in this lawsuit, and, but I'm speaking only for myself. Here's what the lawsuit is about. Arizona law requires an initiative to place a measure on the ballot, and the initiative requires petitions signed by 15% of the voters. This allows the people to decide if the measure should be considered. This wasn't done. The all-mail-in election disenfranchised approximately 10,000 Cochise County voters who were not sent ballots. The Arizona Supreme Court upheld that the voters were disenfranchised, and the matter was sent back to the county for resolution. They have not resolved it. Arizona law requires 60% majority to improve tax increases. This number was not achieved. And yet, here we are with the lawsuit not resolved. Is it time for a settlement? Would a settlement include a new election that would include all eligible voters? Would the ballot language include only a new jail? Wouldn't the cost of an election and only a new jail be less than the current 25-year tax increase? The taxpayers deserve their dollars to be well-spended. The taxpayers deserve their dollars to be well-spent. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, and that concludes our public comment. We're now going to move on to the agenda items on today's agenda. So for Agenda Item Number 1, it's, well, 1 through 4 are on the Consent Agenda. Do I have any member that wants to discuss any of those items or pull them off the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve Consent Agenda Items 1 through 4.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve Consent Agenda Items 1 through 4. Have a second.
A second?
All right, so moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Gomez?
Oh, I'm sorry, aye.
All right, and then Chairman says aye. So the motion passes. The Consent Agenda Items 1 through 4 is approved. All right, we're going to move on to Public Hearings Regarding Development Services, Agenda Item Number 5. We have a presentation by Mr. Matthew Taylor.
Mr. Chair, I suggest we have a motion and a second before everything.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the zoning ordinance 3502 to rezone tax parcels 117-05-042, 117-05-043, and 117-05-048?
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt zoning ordinance 2502 to rezone tax parcels 117-05-042, 117-05-043, and 117-05-054A District 3 from NB Neighborhood Business District and SR43 Single Household Residential Dwelling per 43,000 square feet to RU4 are a rural district, one dwelling per four acres pursuant to the application of Jeff Thede.
I have motion. I have a second.
Second.
All right, discussion, sir. There we go. Mr. Taylor, to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. This is the staff presentation for Docket RZ 2324, an applicant initiated rezoning request from NB and SR43 to RU4. The applicant again is Jeff Thede. The property is located in SunSight's Unit Number 2, near the intersection of Palm Road and Towner Street, encompassing parcels 117-05-042, 043, and 054A. Again, the current zoning is Neighborhood Business and Single Household Residential. Proposed zoning is Rural District. Property is located in Supervisor District 3, SunSight's Unit Number 2, approximately five miles west of Highway 191. These are some drone images. This first image is the property highlighted in yellow viewing to the north. And this is the property viewing west. The applicant did submit a site plan showing an intention to participate in the county's zoner builder program. Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identifies 15 factors used to evaluate rezoning requests. Nine factors are applicable to this downzone. Factors in favor complies with all applicable factors. The proposed development of the property is consistent with the residential growth pattern established in the area. The downzone would reduce the number of allowed principal dwellings. Staff has not identified any factors in favor other than there has been significant opposition from nearby property owners.
I'm sorry, there has or has not been?
There has been significant opposition, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Staff executed the public notification process between 16 and 18 December, mailing notices, posting the property, as well as publishing a legal advertisement. Staff mailed 29 notices to owners within 300 feet, receiving opposition from two property owners within the notification area. One owner has seven parcels and three parcels outside the notification area. Those are designated on this graphic. You see the red Xs to the north of the hatched property. Those are one property owner, and the three red circles are that property owner also, but those properties are outside the notification boundary. We also received one response from an owner who was in opposition, and that would be in the lower left-hand corner below the hatched property. Based on the factors in favor of approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of Docket RZ 2324 without conditions by a vote of 4 to 3 during its meeting on January 8, 2025. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff also recommends approval of Docket RZ 2324 without conditions. Rezoning tax parcels 117-05-042, 043, and 054A from Neighborhood Business District and Single Household Residential District, one dwelling per 43,000 square feet to Rural District, one dwelling per four acres. The factors in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. That concludes staff's presentation.
All right, sir. So on this map in red, that is the business district that's zoned. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So we would be changing that from a... The section here that's marked off would be from basically red to green, which is residential. The other half of the property guy, the resident is asking, is already zoned residential, correct?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
All right. So we're just really talking about three parcels that are converting from business to residential?
It would be one tax parcel would be converted from business. That parcel was actually split-zoned. The northern portion is on business, and the southern portion is on residential.
Okay, I got you. All right. Mr. Chair.
At some point, I suggest that we open a public hearing and then close a public. Because this is a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So how you want to fit that in, just as long as it gets done.
All right, so first thing we'll do... Let me start this over again. I apologize. So we will... We recess the regular meeting? No, we just have to call a public hearing?
You can just open the public hearing and allow for public comment, and then...
Okay, so we will open a public hearing regarding the rezoning. Questions before the board. This meeting's hereby open. And are there any public comments regarding this rezoning?
Chairman, you have several speaker requests.
Okay, all right. So Number 5. All right, first up is Mr. Keaton Shepherd. Are you online, sir? Mr. Shepherd, online? He is online?
Good morning. Can you guys hear me?
There you go, sir. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hey, link for having me. I'll keep it short and sweet here. Basically, yeah, this area in the foothills of the Dragons is pretty special. I chose it pretty specifically due to the amount of site-built homes here and just the pride of ownership that shows in all the residences and just the fact that there aren't manufactured homes or, you know, just kind of blighted properties in the area. So it's just a perfect canvas for a nice home, for nice folks to live. And I know there's a lot of issues in the county, but this place is a true gem. And it'd just be a shame to allow any sort of manufactured home or, you know, even if it's not now with the current owner or in the future. It's just a one-of-a-kind place, and it would just be a shame to see it kind of go that way, because there's plenty of others that are already RU4. In the county, it's a huge area, and there's tons of room for everybody. And it seems like most folks in this area want to keep it how it is with inspected site-built homes. That's it. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Mr. Kevin Todd. Are you present or online, Mr. Todd? Oh, Mr. Todd is present. Good, sir.
I just want to thank everybody. I'm the neighbor to the north and east of this property, of the subject property. Wanted to thank everybody online and also those that drove down to be a part of this. I want to revisit the P&amp;Z meeting, because as Matthew said, the vote was 4 to 3, so one vote away from us not even having to be here to discuss this. We had three of the P&amp;Z members who asked very good, solid, pointed questions that, you know, were very critical in nature. And those questions came down and dialed down to the realization that the applicant can, which we all have known this in the neighborhood for... We've been doing our due diligence here for the last six, eight months on this situation. We've known from the very beginning that the applicant can do what he's intended to do in the existing zoning. There's no need to rezone to RU4 to meet what he's trying to accomplish here. So the origination of all of this comes back to the notice that the county, just as Matthew said, is 300 feet from these lots, meaning if we didn't own extended land that bordered this property, we'd have never even known that this application was going on. It's put on a legal piece of paper buried 30 feet back onto the lot. You'd have no idea. And that's why these RU4s are getting passed, because nobody knows. Half of these properties... I looked and I did a survey, and I looked up every single ownership that they noticed. Half of them are absentee owners, meaning they're not paying their taxes. They're a corporate entity. Everybody around here is completely detached from the situation. So when you zoom out, right, and you notice the people that are actually... These houses, you have to understand, guys, are an eighth mile apart. They're a quarter mile apart. They're spaced way apart, and those are the people that are vested. These are the people that care in the neighborhood. These are the people that are going to respond to your notices of a rezon. It doesn't happen when you just notice an envelope around the lot. So when you zoom out, you get 100% opposition from the people around here, because we don't want the slippery slope. We know that if it goes to RU4, we have zero, absolutely zero protection. The next day, he could drop a mobile home or a manufactured, and we have no recourse. That's the problem. He can do what he wants to do in the SR zoning. That's all I got to say. Thank you so much.
If you can hang on, hang on one second. Stay here. I got a question for you. So when you purchased your property, that particular area, maybe Matthew can chime in as well.
Yeah.
That was zoned...
It's SR43, which is one dwelling unit per acre. And we're all fine with the... We had multiple residents that have rezoned to SR174, which decreases the density. And that's what we're ultimately trying to achieve here. We're going to do it with our property as well. That's a great compromise. What we're not seeing is any cohesive plan or an argument as to why RU4 is necessary here. And it was shown that in the P&amp;Z meeting. That's why the vote was 4 to 3 and almost got overturned.
So, Matthew, so the individual that purchased this property knew at the time of purchase that it was zoned SR?
SR.
Right, when he bought.
And there's a couple NB lots in there, too.
Right, so generally, those lots are restricted to site-built homes, right?
That's what we're trying to protect.
Right, so then, you know, one would argue that there was adequate knowledge of the guy when he purchased the property, that that property was intended for a...
Site-built.
Stick-built home.
Right, and there's plenty of RU4 around the area. I sell it. I'm a Realtor, so, you know. There were lots of options around. It didn't need to inconvenience, you know, all these folks that drove down here and have spent time to try and defend the integrity of their neighborhood.
So all these other... So Matthew, I guess this is to you. All these other parcels, basically to the east and west, they're all still going to remain SR residential, zone residential, stick-built, site-built home, SR?
Mr. Chairman, all the parcels outside of the notification of the actual applicant's property will remain zoned as-is.
So we're going to have an island in the middle, basically?
Of a very large swath of non-RU4s. It would be the only thing in the area zoned that way.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So the ones that don't have an X, were you saying that those are like a lot of absentee?
Yeah, so half of them aren't paying their taxes, so they're not going to respond to a zoning notice, right? And a lot of them are corporate owners, Hawaiian, Arizona, whatever. I've called multiple owners around there that I think they're deceased. You can see nobody's... They don't respond to anybody's attempts to contact them. You'll see that the one X right there that is red, that isn't our property, that Matthew got a no hit on, she owns improved property in Unit 2. That's why she voted no, because she's on board. It isn't there at that parcel. She lives about a quarter of a mile away, but she voted no because she understands what's happening here.
I don't know if this is a...
And she was one of the ones that presented a letter as well.
I don't know if this is a question I can ask, but in District 3 of the P&amp;Z members, how many voted them... How many of them voted against this? Can you tell? Can you tell us that? So I mean, in that district, District 3, the members, did they vote for it?
Oh, the two guys from District 3, how did they vote?
Mr. Chairman's... Three per.
Three per, I'm sorry.
Right, three.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gomez, I don't have that information offhand.
That's fine.
But all the dissenting votes were not from District 3.
Okay. All right, sir, thank you. All right. Next up, we have Ms. Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Rothschild. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am the owner of a house within the notification zone, 531 South Skyline Road. Purchased the house... I also have several lots adjacent to the applicant. Purchased the home in 2021. And one of the reasons I chose that home was because all the amazing neighbors and people around have built really beautiful site-built homes. There's a lot of off-grid homes, but they're really beautifully done. They've all been through all the permitting and that process. And so I opted to pay the higher taxes to be in that type of area, hoping to have a family there one day and have a forever home. And it's a really special place, as Keaton mentioned online. So I'm opposed to this as well for the reasons that have been stated, but also just to preserve the area. I don't know much about zoning, but it sounds like what Mr. Thede presented at the previous hearing, everything that he wants to accomplish. He did say he was planning to do site build. It's my understanding he can still do the opt-out if he does the SR zoning that we're all kind of agreeing on. So it sounds like there's a great compromise for everybody. And my hope is just to really protect this area. It's a beautiful space. I've made many friends and grateful for my neighbors here today. And we're just asking that you consider that compromise that kind of meets everybody's needs at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Michelle Mickey Shields. Is she present? Oh, here we go.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you guys today. Unit Number 2 in SunSight is a highly desirable area because of its location at the foothills of the Dragon Mountains and its proximity to the Coronado National Forest. In addition, it's a desirable area because of the site-built homes and the pride of ownership. Only two properties within a half a mile of the subject property have combined their parcels and downzoned. Both of those have gone to SR174, which is equivalent to RU4, but, and the big but here, is it does not allow for mobile homes or manufactured homes. And that was the reason that both property owners did the SR174. One of them, I know, and the other one is myself. I did that. And on Mr. Thede's application, he said that he was requesting RU4 because he wanted to take advantage of the owner-builder opt-out. And you can do that with SR174, because I did that myself when I built my home in 2016. So SR174 will accomplish what he wants and yet accomplish what the rest of us want, which is site-built homes in the area to preserve the majestic area out there. Upon his original application to rezon, Mr. Thede was met with opposition from all the neighbors, not the, maybe necessarily, neighbors within the 300 feet, but in the community as a large area. And so then, I remember that Mr. Taylor told me in an email that because of all the opposition, he told Mr. Thede he should amend his application to SR174, which he did. But then, now here we are again, and he's back to the RU4 with as much, if not more, opposition. It's my understanding that you guys have been provided with 11 letters from the property owners, not necessarily around, but in that community. And that is... From what we hear on the ground... Okay, those 11 letters is an overwhelming majority of the property owners in the area, which actually live there in the area. So clearly, an RU4 zoning is not what we want, not a good fit for this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shields. Next up is Mr. Jeff Thede. Mr. Thede, are you here? Here he is. Yes, sir.
Chair Antonori, Vice Chair Crosby, and Supervisor Gomez. Good morning. My name is Jeff Thede. This is regarding to docket RZ 23-24. I am here seeking approval for my application to downzone my six acres to RU4 so that I can take advantage of the county's residential owner builder program. RU4 zoning conveys the unique advantage of allowing me to construct my accessory buildings prior to constructing my dream home. At the January 8th meeting, the commission recommended approval of this docket. And finally, there are several precedents of RU4 downzoning in Sun sites number two. In fact, two of those are approximately less than a mile from my property. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Hang on, sir, don't, don't, don't step away. So, um, again, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the dynamic here, right? So you knowingly bought property that was zoned for a single residential home. And now you're asking to downzone that to RU4 so you could put a mobile home on the property and then build a house after that? No, you're gonna leave the mobile home there?
No, sir.
Oh, okay.
There will never be a mobile home on my property, ever. Um, I, I
So what are you gonna, what are you gonna live in, sir? What do you, what are you going to live in?
I have a, an RV, a trailer. Um, and there is a, there's a mechanism whereby you can, um, uh, live in that trailer. There's a permit.
For a certain amount of time as you build a home.
Yes, that's correct.
So, so that's why I'm asking you, 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 are you building a home?
Yes, I am. But I'm not going to live in a mobile home. And I think that that's their point, that I will construct or, or cart out there a mobile home or a manufactured home. That's not the case.
So let me, uh, let me ask you, uh, a question here. So, so with a s- single-family residential zoning, SR 71, is that what it is?
SR 174, mister.
174, I'm sorry. The, one of the previous, uh, people spoke and said that you can do an opt-out and, and build a custom home outside of the standard, I guess, requirements that you, you're required under permitting and, and whatnot. Um, if he is talking about putting an RV temporarily on there for the process, what's, what's the county ordinance with regard to living in an RV for an amount of time before or during the process of building that home?
Uh, Mr. Chairman Supervisors, um, there is a provision within the zoning regulations that authorizes the temporary occupancy of an RV.
Does he get a special use permit to, to do that?
It would be a temporary use permit in conjunction with a building permit or an opt-out permit.
So he's got to get a building permit for what would be a stick-built home? And then he could live in the RV while he's building that house? Does he have a time limit on that?
It would be six months, however, that would play forward if provided there's progress in the construction.
All right, sir, so, so my question back to you is I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand why, why you need to downzone. And if, if, if there's an option where you could build this house and you just told me your intent is to do so, you're gonna live in an RV while you build this house, why not pull a permit? Or begin the process of building a home and then get a special use permit for living in the RV while you're constructing your home? That's what I'm trying to understand here.
Um.
I mean, you bought the property knowing it was zoned, single-family residential, right? So you knew what it was when you bought it. So you know that there were certain zoning conditions and you have, of course, surrounding properties who also bought their properties knowing it was single-family residential. So, I mean, I've got, part of government's role, this is just my philosophy, is you have to balance the rights and liberties of everybody so that you don't infringe overly on one over the other, right? So we have a battle here between what your rights are, and I respect your property rights, but I also have to respect the property rights of your neighbors who also had, you know, when they purchased those properties, they had an intent and, and a desire to live in a certain neighborhood with certain rules as far as zoning goes. So you're, you're asking for an exemption to create an island within an area that is already sort of surrounded by single-family residential homes. I'm trying to understand why we need to downzone for you to do that. What I'm hearing, it doesn't seem like we need to do that. You could still build, live in your RV and build your, build a house without putting a, and you said yourself that you don't plan on putting a mobile home on there.
I, I, I think you've, you've asked two questions. Let me see if I can
Okay.
address one of these here. Um, uh, within the, the building codes, there are, um, a mechanism whereby, um, uh, we offer this RU4 downzoning, uh, to delimit the density for that property. So this is not something I've made up. This is not something, um, this is not custom. Um, this is in the, in the building code, which is why I'm here to, um, make the, the case for my approval.
But Matthew, correct me if I'm wrong, he can combine several lots together, um, and then create one parcel, basically, which is what I'm looking at here. Uh, is that the intent is to combine all these parcels into one parcel? Okay, and then you, you could still build a single-family home on there, right? I'm, I'm trying to, I'm struggling with understanding, parting my, my rookieness, uh, for the zoning here, but I, I'm trying to rationalize, um, why does he have to get RU4?
Mr. Chair.
To build a house?
Yes, sir.
If I could, if I could, uh, have a point of order. Uh, I just would like to note that this is not an appeal. And, and if, uh, we voted one way or another at this time, either side would still have the, uh, the, the, their right to appeal. So if we are gonna spend a whole bunch of time on it, maybe it should, maybe it should go that direction. Did you have a comment on that, Mr. Coria?
I think this isn't appeal, Matt, isn't it from the, the decision?
I can't hear you.
Appeal from the plan. This is an appeal from the decision of the plan.
Yeah.
This is the appeal, right? So I'm sorry, we're, we're trying to get an understanding here and I want to make sure I don't make a legal mistake here.
Yeah, I'd like clarification on that, Mr. Coria, if you could.
I don't know, Matthew, did you have something to?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to state that, um, for rezoning actions, the board of supervisors is our local legislature and approves or denies the rezon. Uh, there is no appeal here.
Okay.
Uh, we have a recommendation from staff and a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would also like to add, sir, uh, the opt-out program requires a minimum site area of four acres and a minimum zoning district with a minimum site area of four acres. So we've historically, as Supervisor Crosby is aware, we've historically had numerous applications within Sun sites. Number one, to combine parcels to reach that four-acre threshold. And number two, to rezone those parcels to a minimum four-acre size. Uh, RU4 and SR 174 are the most common applications. Uh, in about, in the last five years or so, we've had about 18 applications to downzone properties within Sun sites. Most RU4, a handful to SR 174. The applicant, um, has expressed a desire to participate in the owner builder program. You cannot participate in the owner builder program with a manufactured home. That's a prefabricated, certified by HUD, there's nothing to change with that. Um, the owner builder program does allow stick-built homes, modular homes. It allows prefabricated structures that are converted into dwelling units.
Feel like shipping containers or something, is that what?
Correct, correct. Um, SR 174 prohibits manufactured homes and mobile homes. RU4 allows those. The applicant is not requesting to participate in the owner builder program to opt-out with a manufactured home or a rehabilitated site-built home.
So if he gets downzoned, he could throw a manufactured home on that property?
He could, he could. His, but I would say that during my conversations with Mr. Thede, he's pursuing RU4 for two basic reasons. Number one, it allows him to construct accessory structures on the property prior to building a residence.
So the other way around with the 174, he has to build the house first and then the accessories?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct.
There's no, uh, special use permits that grant him the ability to do that without the downzoning?
No, sir, and SR 174 requires a principal use prior to an accessory use. And also I would add to that as well, uh, the size of accessory structures must re- must remain subordinate to the principal residence in SR districts, whereas in RU districts, it can expand and be larger than the residence.
So somebody could put a big barn up.
Correct, and RU4
That's bigger than the house. And in 174, he can't.
Correct.
Chairman, I apologize again for my mistake. I guess I was looking for the word appeal, if I did a few further comments. Uh, with, with, uh, the planning and zoning board or this board, one vote makes a difference in, in, in any election practically, uh, or could. My first consideration, as, uh, as you pointed out, Mr. Chair, is the individual property, property rights of property owner. And so I think I, I understand why the request for, uh, the SR 71 as opposed to the RU4. And, uh, I would also like to point out that, uh, owner builder opt-out participants are proud of their houses just like any, like anybody else. If you, if you criticize their houses, you'd get a whole lot of, whole lot of flack about that.
So, uh, if, if I can, Mr. Todd, can you come back up to the microphone, please? Could you go, just, just hang on one second, just have a seat in front because I'm gonna bring you back up in a second, sir. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand here. So do any of the neighbors in this area have structures bigger than their current home that's on the property? Do they have barns or?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, and again, in this pocket that's almost a square mile, there is no other RU4. He is correct that there are other RU4 zoning, uh, applications that have been approved. But if you look at the reason why, there's no rooftops near them. So the people weren't responding to the, the zoning request.
I'm, I'm familiar with the area.
I, I Yeah, so it's all these little lots, but people annex them and they, you know, by plodage in, in, increase their footprint.
Yeah, I've done, I've done, and I've got several friends that do the tax lien.
So we, yeah, and we all we all do that and we're all in favor of downzoning to less density. But you can see what the argument is here, it's opening up the slippery slope. What if he doesn't do what he says he's gonna do? Or what if something happens and he passes away or his child inherits the property or whatever? We have no recourse, none. And he can absolutely put a mobile home or a manufactured home tomorrow if he wanted to after the rezon. Just because somebody says they're gonna do something, doesn't mean they're gonna do it. And I have seen that over and over and over.
All right, thank, thank you, sir. I, Mr., um, Mr. Thede, can, can come back up? So I, I'm just gonna be honest with you. I, I, I am really struggling here between your rights as a property owner and your neighbor's rights as property owner. So they, they bought property and invested in these properties just like you have. And this is, this is a struggle. I don't want to devalue their investments by granting you the freedom to do and develop what you want in your property. But I don't want to deny you the freedom to do what you want to do because you have certain inalienable rights as a property owner as well. And I'm trying to see if there's a way through the county's zoning system that we can keep it 174 and then give him sort of a permit to build these structures. But you're telling me there's no way we could allow him to do that?
Mr. Chairman, um, this is where the process ends. If the board denies the application, Mr. Thede, you need to file a new application to SR 174.
I'd like to say that I'm struggling with the same thing that you are. Because having gone to the planning and zoning commissions when I was campaigning, I realized how much impact everyone's decision is, right? And there are a lot of people that come to this county because they want the space, because they want the view, because they have a certain, you know, idea of what their neighborhood wants to be. At the same time, I do believe that you need to be able to do what you want, but it just seems like there should be some kind of compromise that would enable you to do what you wanted and still keep your neighbors, you know, um, happy with the fact that they have invested also. You have quite a few people who ha- are upset with it. Um, so it's really tough not being present to hear all the information, you know, um, so it's kind of like, am I voting on emotion or do I really understand everything? Um, this is really tough, that's all I can say, but this is in your district, right?
No, I know, and that's a, that's
Yeah, Supervisor Gomez, um, I think Matthew and I have gone over this in a variety of ways. And, um, uh, so I, I don't know that there's a compromise, and I leave that to Matthew. If there is a compromise that we could articulate.
And no disrespect to Matthew at all. I, I really think you do a great job. But I know that the county always kind of goes in favor of whatever the planning zoning vote is, right? Even maybe if they see that there could be, they just, they have a process they have to follow. And in the meetings that I've gone to in planning and zoning, not necessarily the county always represents what's best for the whole community. And this is where it's you as an individual have rights and also does your neighbors. So this is, this is tough and I understand what you're saying, but I've also seen the opposite side, so.
Sure, so let, let's do this. Uh, please have a seat, sir, and then I'm gonna have the remainder of the speakers, uh, speak. And then I guess we can deliberate after that amongst ourselves and have an open discussion here on, on which way we want to go. So let me bring up next, uh, John Seberg, is John here or online? Mr. Seberg? It says here he's on the phone, on the telephone.
On the phone.
There you are, sir. Go ahead, you have three minutes, sir.
I'm on the phone, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, you have three minutes.
Well, thank you very much, uh, to all the, uh, county representatives. Uh, my name is John Seberg and I'm glad you have the ability to listen to me. Uh, my folks bought that house out in Pierce, which is around Upton and, uh, Pier- and, uh, Palm in 1987. So it's been in the family since 87. When they first moved there, I thought they were nuts. I bought their house in Tucson. And, uh, I've come to really appreciate a year or so later why they came out there. And at that time, I don't think there was another house in that entire section. It was built in 1968 by a Tucson builder when Horizon was, uh, building homes. There is a clone house in Sun sites and I've seen that house. And so, uh, you know, uh, my feeling is it's a pristine area, let's keep it that way. I don't understand why, uh, variations, I know here, and I'm in the Chicagoland area right now, in Cook County, uh, there's, there's variations that can be had. I don't know if there is out there, but there certainly is here. And, and I'm sure there can be variations to, uh, satisfy the builder that he will be building, uh, a permanent structure and a trailer will not come into play. And the fact is, uh, uh, that that would be the way to resolve this. And listening to everything that I've heard, uh, i- it's simple. He's as much as said, he wants, uh, you know, like a permanent house built. Well, then let him do that. And, uh, and, and there would be, uh, uh, zoning variations that would not allow him to bring a trailer on the site from here on forward. And, uh, the thing that I see too is if somebody brought a trailer in there, the tax base, which is what you guys would really like, I'm sure, Cochise County's not rolling in the dough, I would think that the tax base will be destroyed. Because if one trailer pops up and then another trailer pops up, you think people are gonna come into that area and build, uh, stick-based homes? I don't think so. And there goes your tax base. And that tax base is something that I think Cochise County really wants. I see in my tax bill, I own four lots, one of which the house is on. That's the one that pays the money. I'm sure that there's not a, 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 a trailer on one of those lots is not gonna produce nearly the type of funds that, uh, s- single-family residents would, a stick-based home. So it's petty wise and pound foolish to even consider the idea of, uh, even the, the possibility of building or letting a, a, a zoning go that somebody could come in with a trailer. So I, I don't think it's to the advantage of the county there either.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, your time is up. Can I get this picture put up on the screen? The one that's got the site plan layout that he's proposing? And I'm looking, I'm looking at that yellow stripe, is a house? It looks, it, it, it looks like a single wide trailer? I, I'm sorry, I, I I, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just struggling a little bit here. Let me bring up, uh, let me bring up the next, uh, person here. It would be, uh, Amos Julian Hudson is, is, uh, Mr. Hudson, there he is, there he is.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I go by AJ. My property is the corner of Liberty and Highland. I'm on the north side of Highland. I'm in the nearest house to the, uh, to the, uh, national forest boundary. The property that Jeff The property that Jeff is talking about is on the opposite side of the road and a little bit closer than I am in my sight line, looking at the National Forest. Okay, my wife and I, when two thousand eight, sold our family home, kids grown, gone, they're making grandbabies now. And we downsized and moved and built a nice but small home, well-built. Great neighbors, as you've heard, and I did my due diligence. I found property that was zoned according to what my plans and desires were when I bought the property. Jeff did not do that. I've invited Jeff. Jeff has come to my home. I've welcomed him to my home. I've looked at his plan. I know what he has in mind. I've done this. It's going to take him two to three times as long as he says. It's going to cost him about fifty percent more than he's projecting. It's going to be a long time before he finishes what he's talking about doing. It's a very important thing and I don't think anyone's really emphasized this, so I want to do it. It's a very important thing that this zoning remain as it is because the community needs it, the county needs it. We border the National Forest land. Directly opposite us on the west side of the Dragoons and the Cochise Stronghold, there is also land that's zoned for a single site homes. In fact, there's a gated community over there. We need to protect that on the east side of the Dragoons because there's people like me that are going to want to move into the area that want to know that they're going to be able to build on land where their value is not going to go down. And there is, you know, I saw Jeff, I saw his plan and I told him, you can do what I did. You can take the, the storage units that are available a short distance away and they're not cost prohibitive and you can rent those and put the things you need to put away in those storage units. I did that, two of them actually, because we, we had a lot of stuff. He just doesn't want to do that. He says he's not going to put a mobile home up there. And yet he won't avail himself of the zoning that allows him to do what he wants to do and protects the rest of us from knowing that there will be mobile home there someday in the future, either from him or from whoever might come beyond him. So it's important that this zoning, the people that made this zoning as it is originally were wise. It's the land that if someone's going to come in and build a nice home, they're going to want that land. They're going to want that spot. It's important to keep this zoning the way that it is. I ask you to deny the RU four, but let him have the one seventy-four. Maybe I got that wrong. Anyway, I, I suggest that is the win-win. He can do what he wants to do without RU four. Thank you.
All right, well, that was the last speaker. So you guys want to have a discussion?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, go.
You know, it's outside.
I'm sorry.
If at this time you'd like to close the public hearing first.
Oh, I gotta do that. I apologize. Okay, so public hearing is closed. Now discussion.
You know, in Bay Acres, which is not part of Douglas, I've seen over the time that I've grown up and lived there, how you put in one mobile home and then another one comes and it's, it tends to really bring the value down because of the, what happens to the, to all these trailers that get, get, get put in. There's not a lot that's being done as far as like I look at Bay Acres and I look all the way up Washington Avenue and it looks like a junk pile. Now, people have the right, I guess, have their property and have it a junkyard if they want. But after one has it, the next one and the next one, it does devalue it. The people who had bought and had property near there, who are, you know, having to look at this. I understand the individual property owner's right to be able to do what he, he wants with this land. But my feeling is that if you're going into an area that you know is zoned a certain way, there are many areas, I mean, come down to Bay Acres, you could do that and not worry about what your neighbors say. You have also, right, when you go into an area that's zoned a certain way, to know that that's the way it has been zoned. There is always a way to go in and change it, but I mean, my gut is saying for one person to, if you allow this to happen and you have twelve to fifteen people who have bought property around it, who have assumed that it's going to stay a certain way, this is very, very difficult. That's all I want to say.
Yeah, again, I'm, I'm struggling as well. However, I, I think there's a compromise here where, where, and I'm looking at the buildings he has on that, on that site plan and they're all small. They're not all, if you were to build a house on there, they'd all be about the size of or smaller than, than the house. I mean, he's got a house depicted there, the big yellow stripe there in the center. And then smaller buildings, solar, solar array, septic tank, two little sheds, a greenhouse.
It seems like where there's a compromise to be had.
Again, I'm struggling with the zoning, understanding the zoning and the special use permits and the exemptions. If the guy can keep it, if we can keep it single family residents, what's the number again? Seven, one seventy-four. And he could get a special use permit, put a RV on there as long as he gets a permit to start building a house. And he's allowed to put storage units less than twenty foot, I believe is the rule, right? If over forty is a different story, but he could put a eight by twenty storage shed on there, right? To keep his stuff in and everything else while he builds his house, you know. Is he allowed to put solar panels up to help power his tools while he's building the house? Could he put up that solar array?
Mr. Chairman, he could do solar in either SR one seventy-four or RU four.
Before he builds the house?
He can't pull permits simultaneously.
All right, I made, I made my point. So you have the account, Mr. Crosby?
The every time there's a new permit, then that's another cost to that person that they have to pay to the county. Another one that I, and then another issue that I remember from when these OBU rules were changed a little while ago is, well, how big of a connection do you need between a big barn and a primary residence to make it one structure versus a permit here and a permit there? And that was just something that I hesitated about at that time. But my question is, what happens if Mr. Thede doesn't comply with the rules about OBU? And in other words, an RV for too long a time? I know that the quote in the regs is something like, he has to be able to show progress. Are there examples of the county enforcing on OBU participants in this manner? Okay, you haven't, you haven't, you haven't made enough progress, therefore you got to refile. The issue would be, or whatever the punishment would be.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Crosby, I would just respond to your question by stating that this is a rezoning action, really not, not specific to the owner builder program. We're not taking action on that program. I would say that it, that it's a very popular program. Potentially, you could argue that half, if not more of our residential building permits are through the opt-out program in the rural portions of the county. Permits, as long as progress is demonstrated, run at six month intervals, as does the accompanying temporary use permit with recreational vehicle. If the, if the property owner opts out of inspections, then we will not see those deficiencies, notwithstanding the fact that the property owner is obliging themselves and committing themselves to meeting all applicable residential building code requirements as well as the supplemental code requirements. Very rare have we seen, do we see occasions where folks are not progressing to building their home? There are occasions where it's written out. Folks effectively stop, they live in their RV, that's ultimately their intention to do so. And in those cases, if we receive a complaint, we will file a notice of violation with the property.
Okay, so it sounds like the answer is that hardly ever happens, that somebody goes back on their word, especially intentionally. So I wonder, besides those questions, I wonder if we are allowed to amend the SR forty-three in the, in the agenda item two, one seventy-four at this time?
So it's currently one seventy-four?
He's applying for SR. Yeah, he's, he's applying for RU four.
Right.
But it's an S, right?
Currently, it's.
So I think to that question, if you don't mind, I'll pass.
Sure, nice and loud.
I believe that he would have to reapply for different zoning change, correct?
Correct. And we would concur with that statement, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, simply because we're talking about a different zoning classification at this point. The current classification is single household residential. The applicant is requesting rural. In order to go with the SR one seventy-four, the board takes action today. Mr. Thede files a new application for SR.
Does he have to pay another cost to do that? Can we waive that? Can we waive that cost?
This time or the place? It depends on if everybody's happy with that.
So I just want to make sure I, I just want to make sure I fully understand what we're doing here. Right now it's zoned SR.
Forty-three and neighborhood business.
All right.
Correct.
He can't build a house on that?
Mr. Chairman, he can. However, none of the parcels meet that four acre threshold for the opt-out program. That's why he's requesting a rezone and combining those parcels.
And everybody else is one seventy-four?
Everybody else, sir, is SR one forty-three with the exception of a couple of other rezones we've had in Sun sites two to SR one seventy-four or RU four. Surrounding parcels, however, are SR forty-three.
Have we heard anybody that is unhappy with the proposal to amend to or, or reapply, whatever the case may be, to SR one seventy-four? Is Mr. Thede unhappy with that idea?
Thank you. Can you bring him back up and talk? We got to reopen the public meeting.
Yes.
So the public meeting has been closed?
No.
It's been closed. Can't talk? Okay, bear in mind. All right.
Let's vote on it.
Let's vote on it. All right.
So can we, can we have him not have to pay to reapply? Can we waive that so that it's more a compromise for him?
That would be another meeting.
Okay. We'll, we'll take that. All right, so the motion is to adopt zoning ordinance twenty-five oh two, which is basically to rezone the parcel from SR or business SR forty-three down to RU four. That's what we're here for, right? To grant the down zone. So a, a yes vote would be to grant down zone to RU four. A no vote would keep it as it is.
Correct.
All right. So having heard that.
Let me ask questions.
We have had the motion. Okay, all right.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
So if we do that, then we would ask him to reapply to one seven, what is it, one seventy?
Or four, three.
Forty-three?
Right.
SR one seventy-four.
One seventy-four. And at that time, could we then waive the permit for him to have any reply?
We could, as far as I'm concerned, we could. It doesn't mean we're doing it right now.
Yeah, not right now, but down the road, that's what our intention is.
Well, we can't say that.
Yeah.
Well, okay. But I'm saying it aloud, kind of, though I probably shouldn't, but I am.
I'm trying to remember what the terminology is. We could explore that.
Okay.
Working session. Okay, there we go. That's it. All right, so with a motion on the floor, this is my district, so I'll vote for, vote first on this. I'm going to vote no. No.
No.
All right, the votes are three to zero to no. I look forward to maybe sitting down with Mr. Thede and discussing this with you and seeing if we could work something out and accommodate you, sir. Thank you, sir. All right, next, next agenda. We have number six. Do I have a motion for number six? Catherine, just read it.
Okay. Adopt zoning ordinance two five dash oh three to rezone tax parcel one zero five dash two eight dash zero zero five C. District one from RU four, rural district, one dwelling per four acres to RU two, rural district, one dwelling per two acres. Pursued to the application of Zane and Karina Rittmore.
Second. All right, we have motion, we have a second. I'll have this discussion now. Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. This is the staff presentation for Docket RC twenty-four twenty-four. An applicant initiated a request to rezone property from RU four to RU two. Applicants are Zane and Karina Rittenhour. The property is located at ninety-one fifty-five West Coronado Trail. I'd be tax parcel one zero five twenty-eight zero five C. Current zoning is RU four. The proposed zoning is RU two. Property is located within rural plan designations and growth areas within the county's plan. Existing use of the property is single family residential, as is the proposed use. Property is located in Supervisor District number one, southwest of Sierra Vista, approximately one half mile from Parker Canyon Lake. Property is surrounded by SR, excuse me, RU two and RU four zoning. The applicant requests RU two zoning to be able to split the five point six acre parcel into two new parcels. Some drone images. This is a view of the property viewing to the north. And this is, again, the property highlighted in yellow viewing east with Parker Canyon Road in the foreground. The applicant has submitted a site plan demonstrating an intent to subdivide the parcel into two parcels. This will require a minor land division application through the county. The property is proposed to be split along the Coronado Trail alignment. We did notify ADOT. ADOT is not opposed to the rezoning or the minor land division application. Provided Coronado Trail remains accessible to the public and no new driveways are proposed along Parker Canyon Road. Section point, section two point six three of the zoning regulations identifies fifteen factors to evaluate rezoning requests. There are ten factors applying to this subzone. Based on factors in favor of approval, staff finds that the request complies with all applicable factors. The requested development of the property is residential, is consistent and compatible with the existing residential growth pattern of the area. Staff has also received support from nearby property owners. Staff has not identified any factors not in favor of the rezoning request. The applicant mailed letters to nearby property owners on five November. Staff followed that up by executing the notification process between eleven, eleven and twenty December, mailing notices, posting the property and publishing a legal ad. Staff mailed thirty notices to property owners within three hundred feet, receiving two responses in favor. Based on the factors in favor of approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of Docket RC twenty-four twenty-four without conditions by a vote of seven to zero during its meeting on January eighth, twenty twenty-five. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff also recommends approval of Docket RC twenty-four twenty-four without conditions. Rezoning tax parcel one zero five twenty-eight zero zero five C from RU four, rural district, one dwelling per four acres to RU two, rural district, one dwelling per two acres. The factors in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact. And Mr. Chair and Board members, this concludes staff's presentation of Docket RC twenty-four twenty-four.
All right, there's no one scheduled to speak. Do I have to open the public hearing? I still do? Okay, so I will open the public hearing regarding the motion. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Hearing none. I will close the public meeting. We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Mr. Crosby, your district. Yeah, none? Who's coming? All right, I guess we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of adopting the zoning ordinance twenty-five oh three to rezone tax parcel one oh five twenty-eight oh five C from four acres to RU two, two acres? Say aye.
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 Aye. So it passes three, zero. All right, next one, Mr. Taylor. Oh, wait, I got to do motions. I'm sorry. I have a motion for number seven.
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt zoning ordinance twenty-five dash zero four to rezone tax parcel two zero nine dash zero nine dash two four zero eight, District three, from R thirty-six Residential District to one dwelling, one dwelling per thirty-six thousand feet to RU four, rural district, one dwelling per four acres, pursuant to the application of Ronald and Jessica Engel, Engelks.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so go ahead, sir, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. This is the staff presentation for Docket RC twenty-five. An applicant initiated a request to rezone property from R thirty-six to RU four. The applicant are Ron and Jessica Engelkes. The property is located at eighty-two forty-three West Winchester Eastman. That's tax parcel two zero nine, zero nine two four zero eight. Property is currently zoned R thirty-six. The proposed zoning is RU four. Property is located within planned designation areas rural. Existing use of the property is single family residential. The proposed use is also single family residential. Property is located within Supervisor District three, located approximately ten miles north of Wilcox, near the Cochise County line. The property is zoned R thirty-six. It is located within Winchester Ranch Estates, which was planted in nineteen sixty. Parcels thirty-nine and forty were combined to create the current tax parcel in twenty twenty-two by a previous property owner. The applicant requests down zoning five point two acres to participate in the county's owner builder program. This is a drone image viewing to the north and east and a drone image viewing east of the subject parcel, showing the. And a drone image viewing east of the subject parcel, showing the uh, low-density residential development nearby. The applicant has submitted a site plan demonstrating an intent to participate in the owner builder program, developing the site for single-family residential use. Section two point six three of the zoning regulations identifies fifteen factors to evaluate rezoning requests. Eight factors apply to this down zone. Uh, staff has identified the following. Uh, the request complies with all applicable factors. Uh, the, the request would enable development that's compatible with the residential growth pattern. Uh, this is a down zone which would reduce the number of allowed principal dwellings. Staff has not identified any factors not in favor. Staff executed the public notification process between eleven and twenty December, mailing notices, posting the property and publishing a legal advertisement as required by the zoning regulations. Staff mail ten notice to owner, ten notices to owners within three hundred feet was receiving one written response in favor. Based on the factors in favor of approval, the planning zoning commission recommended approval of docket RC twenty-four twenty-five without conditions by a vote of seven to zero during its meeting on January eighth, twenty twenty-five. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff also recommends approval of docket RC twenty-four twenty-five without conditions. Res zoning tax parcel two zero nine zero nine, two four zero A from R thirty-six to RU four. The factors in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact. And Mr. Chairman and Board members, this concludes staff's presentation of docket RC twenty-four twenty-five.
All right. I'm going to hereby open the public meeting. We have one uh, person that has requested to speak, uh, Mr. Steve McNeely. Sir.
He's up for number eight.
Number eight? Oh, I'm sorry. I got, I got my request to speak out of order. I apologize. Look forward to talking to you though, Steve. So do we have anybody uh, that wants to speak to agenda item number seven? No one? Okay. That was easy. I'll close the public meeting. Any discussion? No.
Sure.
All right. So uh, the question before the board is to adopt the zoning ordinance twenty-five oh-four to rezone tax parcel twenty-nine oh-nine, two forty-eight uh, from R thirty-six uh, to RU four. Uh, it's my district. I'll go first. So vote aye.
Aye.
All right. Three to, three to zero. Uh, zoning passes. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Sir.
Thank you for your endurance, Mr. Taylor. Yeah, I appreciate it. As we learned, Ms. Gomez and I learned the, learned the ropes about zoning and stuff. So appreciate your patience, sir. All right. So good. We'll uh, we'll move on to agenda item number eight. Um, Ms. Gilman, do you have something to present regarding this or motion?
I do, but I'll take the motion.
Oh, that's right. I keep forgetting. I get so far ahead of myself. I apologize. Do I have a motion for number eight?
I uh, approve the renewal of the intergovernmental agreement between Cochise County and the following municipal corporations. Benson, Bisbee, Douglas, Sierra Vista, and Wilcox to support, in support of Cochise County Tourism Economic Council in the amount of thirty-four thousand effective through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five with automatic renewals for four successful or successive one-year periods.
Second. I have a second. Okay. Now, Ms. Gilman.
Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, at our work session last week, you asked some very good pointed questions about the productivity and, and um, expenses of the Explorer Cochise and the Cochise County Tourism Economic Council. So I went back and found um, prepared a, a past uh, report that was given to the council as of our yearly activities. So that's what I'm presenting to you today. Uh, some information is that the um, uh, Arizona Office of Tourism, as I mentioned before, it allows, this council allows us to access that funding from the Arizona Office of Tourism Co-op. And listed here are just a few of the uh, print media and digital media that ads, banner ads have appeared on related to that funding, as well as the non-AOT co-op is funding from the council itself, our own budget. Uh, three banner ads, that black block unfortunately is a video that's not going to play on a PDF, but it's a really great thing. Oh. There is music that also goes with that, but that's.
We could home.
A general uh, look of that banner. It appeared that pop-up came on the Smithsonian website. It would play um, for the Smithsonian magazine as well as these banner ads. So that's in, that's uh, content that was paid for by the Arizona Office of Tourism Cooperative funding. Uh, the next slide. It's a little bit small, hard to read. Sorry about that. But the um, this is just some of the data related to that Smithsonian campaign. Um, IO stands for insertion order goal. And that was the uh, numbers there for the video package. That's the video that played before. And then the uh, various designs and the banner ads. Um, click-through rate is CTR. So you can see how many people clicked through once they saw those ads. Um, and then the video stats for those banners. Uh, the Explorer Cochise website also has, well, the Explorer Cochise also has a Facebook page. And this is just a sampling of some of their recent posts promoting events in Wilcox, Douglas, and Bisbee, as well as Arizona State Parks. And then we also are able to provide placer data to the municipalities. This is um, a somewhat pricier service that the municipalities may not be able to afford on their own. So this data takes GPS locator data from cell phones. And you'll see in the upper corner there, that's a map of the Benson GPS data. And then the various uh, graphs show visitors to the town for one year from November twenty-three to twenty-four. And so you see visitor journey is where they came from to town and where they went next. A lot of people, of course, come in to use the gas station in Benson and then move on.
This is very big brother-y.
Now, technology is amazing.
Yeah.
Turn off your GPS locator if you don't want to be found. Um, peaks uh, in the Lantern Festival and of course, the Fourth of July in Benson. They do it up big out there. And then Carchner Caverns. Um, just anecdotally, another report we have shows that Carchner Caverns receives one to two visitors from each state every year. So it's a big draw to the county and to the Benson area. Uh, then the following slides show placer data for Bisbee. Of note for Bisbee that their peaks and visitors come with their pride festivals. The return of the turkey vulture, um, garden tours and the Bisbee one thousand. You see Bisbee, our Bisbee just has so many festivals that there's a lot of peaks in their data. Uh, Douglas, the next slide, and you see their Douglas days as well as port of entry crossings reflected. And then Sierra Vista, often their peaks are around um, peak shopping days, Veterans Day, and Fort Wachuka family visits. For soldiers. And peaks for Wilcox are Wings Over Wilcox Wine Festivals in the spring and fall, and of course, Apple Annie's. So this helps the uh, local offices of tourism to know when people are coming, where they're going, and how they can target their marketing for more effectiveness. That's just a quick update on what they're doing related to this IGA. The thirty-four thousand that the county puts in um, promotes these kinds of services to the municipalities. Uh, the various tourism offices are also meeting regularly uh, in each other's towns to talk about events. Uh, granted, this whole product is only as good as what we put into it and the cooperation of all the participants.
Technical question, uh, Ms. Gilman. So why is the IGA out of alignment with the budget process? I mean, so, so why, why don't we have, cause we're evidently from what I understood from the working meeting, this thirty-four K has already been appropriated. Correct? In this current budget?
I would say the thirty-four K has already been paid for for this fiscal year. Yes.
So it'll be up for decision.
We would have.
Right. It would be up for decision regarding the next fiscal budget, right? So we're approving an IGA now.
Yeah. It's just the terms, the dates of that IGA were out of sequence with the budget. So we, in order to continue in the next latter half of the fiscal year, we need to renew the IGA.
Then this decides we're gonna go and then it automatically gets renewed for the next four years.
Right.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. When I'm looking through this, I don't see Douglas pictures. I mean, we got Slaughter's. I mean, unless, I just can't see it. But tell me whether there's a picture of actually the Douglas community.
This is just a sampling. I think that's the Gadsden.
That's not the Gadsden.
That's not the Gadsden?
No.
My picture's kind of small.
So this is my problem. Douglas is saying, and it, from the time of my dad, when he was mayor in two thousand eight to twenty twelve, they do not get anything for this fifteen thousand dollars that they put in. Port of entry, you know, I think you said this, the spice of the port of entry, that could be the kids coming over to go to school. Right? So Douglas days, I know that they spent a lot of their money marketing. We, you know, we have the Slaughter's Ranch. We've got the Gadsden Hotel. We've got the uh, airport, which has the only, I think there's only four Trojan planes in all the world left. I don't see Douglas getting a bang for their buck. So the mayor is thinking of withdrawing. I don't blame him because I just don't see, and, and when I used to go to meetings back in two thousand eight to twenty twelve, I was, I was having to force the issue, what are you doing for Douglas? We have, you know, we, I'm on the, on uh, the Douglas Rotary. We put on a lot of events. We did, you know, the, the, I think it's the Race to the D Hill. We do, you know, when we take kids up in the airplane. I mean, there's a lot that the community puts on itself that does not get any support from the tourism board in spreading this out there, you know, and, and marketing it. So when you say that there's, those are the port of entries, I mean, I'm seriously thinking tho, those are when the kids come over and I think the Douglas High School, uh, not the school, the whole public school system in Douglas, good half of them come from Al Prieta. So that right there makes me really nervous and worried because I don't see how I can say that this is the fifteen thousand that Douglas is putting in is, is worth their money when they have so many things going on. And we need to draw tourism to that corner of the county. So I'm concerned that we're automatically doing this for four years. I mean, they could drop out at any time, correct?
Right. There is a term within the IGA that any member of the um, partnership could drop out with ninety days' notice at any time.
And Tombstone has dropped out.
They did several years ago. Um, we do, of course, because Tombstone is a major tourism draw. It doesn't make sense for uh, the website to not include Tombstone in an itinerary or to remove it completely, of course. So we do mention Tombstone.
So they're getting a freebie.
Yeah, but we, we, but we, we benefit from it. So.
Yeah, I got you. I got you.
But the, the thing is, is like, I don't think, I, I'm not a poet. I think we have to do a better job and we have to promote the county as a whole. So I don't know. I'm concerned about just renewing it for four years because then it's just like saying, okay, you guys are doing, just keep up, go, go ahead and do what you're always doing. Where I think we have to really look at how this board is operating, how they market places, like say, Naco, not, you know, Naco's gonna have that camp, right? And Douglas, because we have several things. So I, I'm perplexed about having to renew it for four years.
Let, let, let me, let me offer you just, just my suggestion. So the thirty-four K is up for budget review anyways.
Right.
So this is your opportunity to send them a strong message that they have between now and until we finalize the budget uh, for next year, or we won't include the thirty-four thousand and we'll include our ninety-day notice to withdraw. That's just, that's just an option.
And I, and, and the reason, I don't want a micromanager. It seems like I'm gonna pick everything. But because of my experience in two thousand eight and twenty twelve, because of what I'm hearing from the mayor of Douglas that he'd rather spend the money on getting his own marketing person, I think this is a time for a wake-up call to say, let's see what we can do better than, than the board supervisors could support it. And I'm willing to go in the trenches with the council to see how we can do it, learn from Tombstone and Bisbee who do a great job of marketing. So I, yeah, I think that's.
Mr. Crosby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning picks winners and losers. Planners nearly inevitably pick themselves as winners.
Yeah. What is that? You put that in simple language?
Sure. Planning picks winners and losers. We just saw that in the, in a, you know, a very lengthy discussion about zoning. Planners nearly inevitably pick themselves as winners.
I just, I just, I just looked back from my time in the legislature with the various economic development groups that have sprung up from time to time and they get significant amounts of money. And they've never provided a metric uh, for that bang for the buck. I remember one particular case where I met with the, at the time, the president of Intel, who was getting four million dollars from the taxpayers of this state to create jobs. And when I pressed him to get the information, how many jobs he was creating with that four million, I found out that the jobs that were created paid, paid nothing close to the four million dollars the state was putting in. So I said, how about this? Instead of giving you four million dollars for job creation, we direct the treasurer to buy four million dollars worth of Intel stock. He literally threw his napkin on the table and told me to go fly a kite and left the meeting. Because that tells you, you know, that you're not getting the bang for your buck sometime that you put into it. So for my two cents, I think we need to seriously look at this come budget time, whether or not we want to chip in the thirty-four grand. I'd say let's just approve the IGA because they're, they're in the middle of something, but basically tell them. We, we, we can, we can opt out with the ninety-day notice. And as we get into the budget discussion, I'm gonna seriously take a look at this. I'm sure Ms. Gomez is as well. I'm sure Mr. Crosby already has a zero.
And you do have, you had a speaker request.
I have a speaker request. Okay. Uh, now I have Mr. Dealey. I apologize. Do I have to do a public thing? No. Right? He could just speak. All right. Sir, you could just speak. You have three minutes. You still got all those tractors?
I, I got rid of the song. You need one? I got a couple.
I know you got lots of them. All right. So you go ahead, sir.
Steve McNeely from Tombstone.
Yeah.
Uh, I own Tombstone Zip Line. And the thirty-four thousand, I can't see why the county should be paying uh, Explorer Cochise. I mean, they, they told me, I, I came to the board, I think at least twice, three times. They would not list my business and I pay taxes in the county. It's a very good attraction for tourism, for a great family or deal. All I want to do is be listed on activities. So they could Google it and we'd come up. We got a good website. They denied me to do that. They finally conceded and put me in dying and lying, which doesn't really fit Tombstone. I mean, zip line. So, you know, to me, if the county is gonna pay money for that, they should represent every business. So I understand each, each city is paying, I understand fifteen thousand. And Tombstone knocked out. I can't do anything about that. I don't run the city. And the reason I think they did is because they got away from the historical and that pretty much is what Tombstone's all about. And I think Tombstone's a great draw for tourism and something should be worked out. If the county's gonna give money, then I think every city should be represented, including Tombstone and the businesses there that are trying to promote. I mean, I was the only thing in Southern Arizona for families to do as far as the zip line is concerned. There is none. And I, I felt I was cited. Uh, and I, I, you know, I got some new people on the board. Now I know that, but to me, it wasn't fair to have the county contribute to thirty-four thousand dollars and we don't get represented. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. So like I said, uh, I think, I think we have an opportunity here to put them on notice.
Yes.
And then when we get in our budget discussions, we can then, if we decide to not provide the additional funding in next year's budget, we can give the ninety-day notice and say, here's our ninety-day notice and we get hopped out of the IGA. But since they're up and running and they already got the money, I don't know what, what the effect of pulling the IGA would have. Mr. Crosby.
Ms. Gilman, is there a map that shows the whole county versus the smaller blue shaded area we saw on the placer data map?
I don't have a map handy, but on the website of the third.
Before we renew, whatever it is, for, before the next budget?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Thank you. Because besides not including certain cities, there's only five cities there. You're talking about all the rest of the whole important county. And we can't see exactly what that is uh, without, I mean, we have, we have representation that people here and there will call in.
Yeah. My particular heartburn is, again, to Ms. Gomez's point, uh, if the county's chipping in thirty-four grand, it should be able to promote everything in the county. Right. Not excluding Tombstone, not excluding Douglas, not excluding, you know, if the other cities are chipping in, I get it. Um, but there's gotta be some. if the other cities are chipping in, I get it. Um, but there's gotta be some, some sort of non-bias way of.
Like Slaughters Ranch, it's outside of Douglas. I guess it's, I don't know where it is in the county, that's a huge draw, but I don't ever see it promoted.
Yeah, I, we're, we're gonna definitely have to revisit this come budget time, um, and discuss this. There may also may be a better way of doing it. We'll have to have, uh, well, let's just say, I'll appreciate the input from this organization between now and budget time, uh, to talk more about this. But, uh, right now, the motion on the floor is to approve renewal of the IGA between Cochise County and the following municipal corporations, Benson Bisbee, Douglas Sierra, and Wilcox in support of the Cochise County Tourism and Economic Council, in the amount of thirty-four thousand dollars. So there's motion on the floor. All those in favor, Mr. Crosby? Aye. Ms. Gomez?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. So that was our first dissenting vote, uh, where we had a two to one, and, uh, that's, that's a good deal, it shows good, good debate. And, but again, I'm, I'm voting aye with, with a lot of reservation, I look forward to that.
Thank you for coming, McNeelys.
Yes, yep. All right, uh, next we'll move on to agenda item number nine. Oh, we'll move, move on to Ms. Jackie Clay, the Cochise County Superintendent, but I need a motion first. So so, Mr. Crosby, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve intergovernmental agreement IGA between Arizona Department of Education and Cochise County Schools for the Arizona Project Bright Futures Program in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-four annual effective upon execution.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, my motion is seconded, and I'll go to Ms. Clay. Here we go.
Good morning Chairman and members of the board. Um, this brief presentation is basically regarding our, um, Arizona Project Bright Futures Program. This is a grant from, this is a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar grant from the Department of Education. We were, um, selected as a, um, pilot to hire a coordinator to support the schools in suicide prevention and also in intervention strategies. Working. Just FYI, we are already working with all of these organizations right now.
Uh, could you go back to the, the previous slide, please? Thank you.
Okay. Basically, these are the positive impacts on our students. And I'd just like to let you know, I think, um, supervisor Gomez, you had asked us about suicides. From, um, twenty twenty-one to now, we've had eleven.
Okay.
Was that again, twenty?
Twenty twenty-one to now. We've had eleven. Um, I was just going over some emails, um, earlier, and I, I counted fifteen emails from our citizens to me regarding bullying and suspected suicides of their children. And one of the biggest challenges we have is, just like I said before, the teachers are taught to teach all the different social issues that are going on because of what's going on in the world today. They're not trained to do that. And our job at the county superintendent's office is to support our schools and fill in those gaps. So, um, basically, these are the things that it would help. And, um, the other biggest thing is our rural support. We have our smaller schools. They're having, um, a lot of challenges right now. The bigger schools, they may have a little bit more money than them. But the smaller schools, they have to depend on Tucson. Tucson is gonna charge them double. All right? They're gonna come down here for a couple hours and then go back up there. But what we're doing here, we're providing all the support down here, and that's what this grant does.
Uh, our goal for the grant is to increase the youth service organizations that are available to help identify and work with youth that are at risk for suicide and self-harm. Uh, we also want to increase the capacity of clinical services by collaborating, um, with all the agencies that were listed on that earlier slide. And I think the most important thing, um, in Cochise County is really improving that continuity of care for these kids. Uh, because of the challenges accessing the mental health services, um, that continuity of care is often broken. And when you're talking about a child that's at risk for suicide or self-harm, that disconnect can, can be the difference between life and death. Um, as Dr. Clay said, the Cochise County, um, was selected as the pilot for this Arizona Project Bright Futures. We will work with Department of Health and with the Department of Education at a state level to develop the programming which will eventually be released statewide over the next five years. In our kind of preliminary meetings, um, it was asked what program exists that's like this, and that would be the Arizona Project Aware. Um, and this is just some of the evidence-based things that came out of Project Aware. And after doing the Project Aware, they did realize, uh, that it was not really hitting the mark for rural communities and also for tribal communities, which is one of the main reasons why the state went after this particular grant funding so that we could address rural and tribal communities. And these are just some of the statistics from the Arizona Project Aware. Uh, so we're gonna hire one individual who is going to work with, uh, state and develop curriculum, uh, deliver awareness and prevention training to the schools in the county. And then also train school staff to deliver that programming so that we can, um, have sustainability with that. And the state will help us in developing that training and picking the models that we'll use for that. But the end goal is to have the schools to be able to carry this program within their own districts by being able to train their own staff, and then also collect and report the data back to the state.
So we're giving the schools the capacity to take care of their students with our assistance. And the last thing is, um, our students from our Student Advisory Council, we had a meeting Saturday. And they were very, very excited about coming here to brief you before they went up to the State Board of Education to brief them in Jan- in, um, in June.
That'd be great. I'm really looking forward to that.
They are too.
So, Senator Clay, I, I brought up in our working group that this is a grant, you're gonna hire a full-time employee, you're gonna put a job rec out, and my only request is that we ensure that that employee is a Cochise County resident.
We're gonna put it out, sir, and shake the trees.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's my only. Sir, any other, any other discussion?
You betcha. I'm honored to, uh, hold my office of Chaplain of the Marine Corps League. I'm gonna attend one of their meetings tonight. There's, that's a nonprofit, by the way. There's nothing more important than the issue of suicide for the, the rate of which, last I heard, it was twenty-three per day among veterans. So, uh, the last time you were before us, Ms. Clay, I asked, I said something like, I want to see a well-thought-out strategy for suicide prevention. And, uh, I commented that the more taxes are expended and collected, the less discretionary income taxpayers have to support charities with no or low overhead. And I looked at the, this is the, the slide that I requested to go back to. Uh, are any of these, uh, nonprofits on this page? I, I couldn't detect that these are nonprofits on this page.
Yes. You just look at some, all of, some of those represent groups of nonprofits. If you would like the exact name of some of them, you can go ahead and give those to you.
Well, the only one that I see is a catch-all is other child and youth-serving organizations, and that's fine. Uh, so could you, uh, briefly address your strategy with nonprofits?
Right now, this, we are working with them. We have meetings with, um, nonprofits right now. They are, at this moment, they go into the schools and they present at our, um, yearly conferences. We have Innovations in Education Conference. We had over three hundred people attend this year. Um, so they are, they are already part of the family. This is nothing new. We don't have to go out there and say, hey, would you come and work with us? They're already working with us within the schools, like End in the Silence, which is a big, um, NAMI um, suicide prevention program that's for parents, students, and for teachers. Okay, they're also going to be, um, training our Student Advisory Council members in June so that they can take these, these, um, this information back into the schools. So all the, um, we have a lot of nonprofits who are already working with us, showing us what they have to do. And in fact, since we have done this, we're getting a lot of emails. So you're talking about shaking the trees and, and the low-hanging fruit. Now we have people who are saying, Jackie, you know, we're certified in this, this is what we can do, et cetera, et cetera. So the big, the first thing would be to continue our meetings. We're already having meetings, we're already doing this. Now we're getting the money to have somebody, instead of it being our side job, right? Now we're gonna have some, now we're gonna have somebody who specifically, that's their gig. Because right now, uh, between me and Cynthia, there are a lot of things going on in our office. We don't need it, we don't want anything to fall off the plate. But when we get someone who, they are specific, and this is what they do, that's the first part of our strategy, just getting that person there, going on listening tours. Um, looking at the data that we have so far, working with the superintendents. These things we're doing already is now this, we have an added person on the team that's going to be specifically doing these things.
Thank you, Madam Clay.
Um, Mr. Crosby, too, I'd just like to address also the military because this.
Oh, yes.
This covers up to age twenty-four. Um, in, in our discussions, my discussions with the state, we have talked about pulling in nonprofit, um, military organizations because one of the benchmarks that we need to do is really hit that age set fro- from, you know, you know, preschool through age twenty-four. And the only way we're gonna be able to do that is to collaborate with, uh, Fort Huachuca and to work with the military. So we will be forging relationships with nonprofit organizations related to the military. So some of the younger soldiers that come in, we will be able to train organizations to help provide the services through this program.
Okay, just to reiterate if I may.
And to add on to that.
Excuse me.
We are working with the Garrison Command.
Taxes are expended and collected, the less discretionary income taxpayers have to support charities with no or low overhead. So I understand that many of these i- in the, uh, school category are tax-funded. So what I like to see is outreach to, as you mentioned, military nonprofits. And you mentioned one is NAMI, right?
We have more than one. I, I'd go ahead and get you that list. And we're also working with our Garrison Commander. Just had a meeting with him, um, last week on this and some other things. So we are definitely, me being a twenty-five-year military veteran, Command Sergeant Major, definitely this is a big issue with me also. And we have a great relationship, personal relationship with our Garrison Commanders and our Garrison Sergeant Major on this right here.
Thank you, Madam Clay.
Thank you, sir.
So, so again, uh, Superintendent Clay, so remind me again, how many years this grant is for?
This is a five-year grant.
Five-year grant.
And since we're technically a contractor with the, uh,
Right.
the, um, Board of Education, state, um, the state, with ADE. Um, it will renew on a yearly basis. That's just the way they do their contract.
Right, so this was, this was a federal grant to the state.
Yes, correct.
And the state subdivided that grant for the rural.
Yes.
Portion of the state.
Covers the rural requirement.
And we got, we got, we got a hundred and twenty-two K of that a year for five years.
Yes. Renewable every year, and every time we come to you, the promise was to give you, um, some data on exactly what we've done so far.
Okay, any other questions, Ms. Gomez?
Nope.
Nope. Um, all right, I'm gonna call the vote, and I guess we'll, we'll mix it up a little bit. I'll go, I'll go first. Um, so on the motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Arizona Department of Education, Cochise Community, or Cochise County Schools for the Arizona Project Bright Futures Program in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars per year, uh, peck, effective upon execution, I'm gonna vote aye. Uh, Ms. Gomez?
Aye.
Ms. Crosby?
Aye.
All right, we have a three-zero vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will want those numbers.
We're getting them too.
All right.
And the students.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, uh, information technology. Do I have, uh, some motion to approve a contract? Do I have a motion? Uh, I will go, Mr. Crosby, honestly. Do I get a motion, Mr. Crosby?
Item number ten, approve contract twenty-five dash one zero dash I T D dash zero one with all copy products for lease of multi-use copiers. Should be a cookie. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, uh, good morning, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, and, uh, Superintendent Crosby and, uh, Gomez. Uh, I'm Alan Warden. I am here from the IT Department asking you to approve, uh, contract, uh, twenty-five dash ten, I T D dash zero one with all copied products. This is to refresh the entire fleet of our copiers, uh, the multifunction machines that we, we are used throughout the county, excuse me. Um, during our last meeting, you had asked me to look into the, uh, impact of inflation on this contract. And I'm actually really happy to report that we are actually seeing an overall decrease. Over the course of the five-year contract, we will be saving an estimated five hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Ooh, divided by thirty-seven thousand miles per road mile. How many roads could we pay with that? So we'll be talking to this guy. Uh, that, that's very good news.
Yes. Um, are there any questions about the contract I can answer for you?
No, sir, thank you.
I don't have any questions. You have any?
No.
All right, so, uh, therefore, uh, the motion before the board is to approve contract twenty-five one zero I T D dash zero one for all copy products for the lease of the multi-use cop- copiers. All, all in favor? I'll go to Mr. Crosby.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so it passes three-zero. All right, next, uh, agenda item is number eleven.
Oops.
Luckily, that's empty. Thank you. I'll go to Ms. Gomez. Can I get a motion?
I motion to approve intergovernment, oh, wait, wait.
No, eleven.
Eleven. Approve the Families First Prevention Services Act, FFPSA title. Set four?
Four.
Yeah, dashy, service agreement between the Arizona Supreme Court, Administrative Office of the Courts, AOC, and Cochise County Probation Department, effective July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second, second. All right, we have a motion on the floor. We're discussing, Ms. Teresa Rocker, is she present?
Looks like she is not. I believe due to the length of the meeting, she may have had to get back to work. Um, but as the board might recall from last week, this is, um, she briefed the board during the work session. So hopefully you have enough information to go forward.
Okay, so I have a motion. I guess, uh, this time I'll go, Ms. Gomez, can I get a, uh, two, oh, call for the vote, I'm sorry, call for the vote. All those in favor, Ms. Gomez?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I vote aye as well. Motion passes three, three-zero. All right, next up is, uh, agenda item number twelve, state and federal legislation. Can I get a motion? Number twelve, I'll go back over, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, you don't, you don't need a motion.
Need a motion?
You can just have a discussion.
You need to report. Right?
Oh.
Tell us, tell us all about our, our representative to solve the other day.
Well, um, discussion I got is, the, the big one I saw was the flurry of election reform bills that are, uh, going through the legislation. This is where I wanna, again, draft a resolution from the board in support of ending the practice of dropping off ballots on Election Day by having ballots returned by seven PM, I think, believe now is what the legislation states, on the Friday prior. So I'd like to have that discussion to where we can draft that resolution. We could have staff and us have inputs, you could provide inputs, and then we'll draft that up and then send that to both the President of the Senate, the Speaker of the House, and the Governor, asking them to support that notion of having those ballots returned prior to that to help the Elections Department of this county, and of course, the county recorder, who has to process those, whoever him or her may be when the time comes, so they don't spend, you know, a lot of time, um, trying to process signatures. So that, that's one thing. The other thing, again, uh, on the federal side, as I, I had mentioned in the, uh, in the working session, I still, I still think we need to get an impact review done, a legal impact review done with all those executive orders, and how it affects particularly the Sheriff's Office and the Health Department, uh, which I saw as the two big, uh, hits there. The other, I don't know if it affects Ms. Clay or not, but a lot of those also deal with education. I'm assuming they're gonna hit school districts with that, uh, as well. I've seen several school districts in Phoenix have already said, including the Phoenix Unified School District, said they are not gonna cooperate, uh, with the executive order in question. So I don't know what the purview is of the county over school district. I don't think it's much. Uh, but I do need to see some of those impacts, because clearly there's an impact. Uh, but I do need to see some of those impacts because clearly there's an impact to school districts as well in those executive orders. We need somebody to brief us on the impacts of all those executive orders because some of them are pretty significant.
I would also say that, you know, Douglas, there's a high amount of students that come from AP over and go to school in Douglas, right? Don't pay tuition. I don't know what their status is. I don't know how that works, but it would be good to find out.
Well, there's a requirement, I think, with, with the Phoenix Unified School District has heartburn with is there's a requirement to ensure that the parents of those kids are, and those kids themselves are US citizens. So there's, if there's a phenomenon where the parents are illegal, but the kid was born in the US, I think the kid is good. But if the parents are illegal and the kids are illegally in the country, I think the funding for those kids are to be stopped or pulled or prevented or provide, prevented from being provided to those school districts. So that's, that's the provision that's in there. So the question is, who asks that question? And who determines the legal status of kids and parents at school districts? So, but I don't know if that's, that's not our department, I believe.
I advise the superintendent of schools, but that's not the school boards themselves.
It is the school boards?
It's not.
It's not? It's hers?
No.
Oh.
We, you know, the superintendent of schools is a county officer.
Right.
But the school boards are separate from that.
Okay, so, so like the decision by the Phoenix Unified School District, that was a school board decision. You're saying that that would be individual by school district in this county?
Yeah, we wouldn't have anything to do with that.
Okay, so we wouldn't have anything to do with that. But the health department, we would. For services provided to those that can't prove citizenship, that order says we're to cease all federal funds going to that. We need to look at that.
The, the county health department is definitely under the supervision of the board.
Right, right. All right, any, any other, uh, comments? I have nothing. All right, and that's it. How about, uh, Ms. Gilman, do you have a report for us of anything?
Uh, just to remind the board that I'll be going to the Cochise Combined Trust Annual Meeting this Thursday and Friday in Tubac. This is where we hear about, um, any benefits to our employee medical coverage. And I envision our vision and dental coverages and work towards minimizing any impact that will have on our budget due to increased medical costs. So that's a negotiation with all the trust members and I'll be doing that over Thursday and Friday.
All right, any discussion on that?
No, sir.
Yep. All right, we'll move on to summary of events. Um, anybody want to promote anything in their district this, uh, this next two weeks, Mr. Crosby?
I'll pass it this time.
Yeah, Ms. Gomez.
I do have something. Um, I am putting on Dance for Douglas, which I think went out on the county, um, Facebook. It's not a requirement by any means. It's just a dance for Douglas. They, we used to have them all the time. And we don't, and so people were like, why don't you put on a dance? So I'm putting on a dance February eighth, six to eleven. If anybody, it's, it's Mexican music, Cumbia Escorridos by Rudy Bernal. If you've not heard this guy, he's incredible. His band is great, local. And, uh, food will be, uh, food will be served from six to seven, but you have to buy your own liquor and soda. But I'll provide you water and food and dance. So there you go, February eighth, Saturday.
All right, I'm, I don't really have much to report from District Three. District Three kind of dominated this meeting today, so a lot of stuff going on. So, uh, the next meeting will be held today at one PM, which is in eight minutes. In the Board of Supervised Executive Conference Room for a special board meeting and possible executive session. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? I don't need a motion? I could just adjourn? Oh, this meeting is adjourned.